First, I would like to thank everyone for coming here to the Bicentennial School, Ward Eight, for our Ward Eight annual ward or town hall meeting. It's great to have so much involvement. Now, there are more people here than any of the others. So, so far, we've held three others in different wards, three, two, and another ward. And so, you've done a great job in coming out. Now, I know there are some things you'd want to talk about, which is good. So, thank you all for coming. And I want to thank the members of our Board of Aldermen, of course, who are here as well. We have Mary Ann Malisi-Golia from Ward Eight, and she is right here, of course. And we have Lori Wilcher, who's the president of the Board of Aldermen. Right here, here's Lori. Now, they come to all of these meetings, or as many as they possibly can, because they're both, and Rick Dowd may come as well, very involved in the city, very concerned about this neighborhood, about the city as a whole, totally committed to trying to make progress for Nashua. So, I really want to thank them for coming tonight, and everything they're doing for the city over a long period of time. We hold one of these every year in each neighborhood. I also hold a coffee for the mayor once a month downtown at Jajabell's. I'd love to do that in the South End, if possible. I, at one point, was talking to press about that, and it sort of never came together. But it would be nice to be able to do that more frequently. It's a little more informal than this. And over time, you can sort of talk about issues in more depth, because you can bring up things, week after, you know, month after month, and you kind of revisit things. And it would really help if we could ever arrange that. So, I'd love to do that. But what I usually do is sort of give you a little update on some of the things that are going on in the city. We do have a short presentation for you, and then take your questions and concerns. And I know, and Mary Ann has filled me in on last week, Saturday, the Flatley meeting. I know there's going to be questions and concerns about that. So, we will get to that pretty quickly. But I thought we would kind of proceed in the normal manner, and I'd tell you a little bit about what's going on. So, since I've been mayor, which is now three and a half or so years, I think the city has been very focused on trying to strengthen our economy as much as we possibly can, grow our tax base, and expand opportunities for as many people as we possibly can. On the job front, things are going very well. I mean, we have a strong economy, low unemployment. We've seen a lot of additions, and I know this has a traffic impact down at Exit One specifically. But we have seen a lot of jobs added at BAE, both here in the South End and on Canal Street. We've seen new companies come to Gateway Hills, some of them very small companies. Recently, the Flatley Challenge, as an example, brought Zogo, which is a tech company, as well as a biotech company, a small biotech company. We've seen jobs added at Boston Billiards, believe it or not, more than 100. Prudential Linen Supply came to Nashua up near Simon Street and added 100 and some jobs. Days Jewelers opened, added some jobs. Amazon opened some jobs on a place on what's called State Street, off Amherst Street. I think that's 60, 70 Amazon jobs up there. And something that the city has worked on very hard, which is to try to bring Pennachuck back, the headquarters, back to downtown Nashua from Merrimack. That looks like it's about a 95% possibility at this time. That would go, they would relocate in the Oval, at the Courthouse Oval, as we know it, in that former courthouse space. So, city has worked very hard to persuade them, because, believe it or not, even though we own Pennachuck, we have limited control there, for reasons we could discuss. But we've persuaded them, worked very hard to persuade them to come back, bringing 60 or 70 jobs to the city. Now, we're also joined by a couple of people, street people, from the mayor's office. Gerald Linder is over here. Carrie Miller is walking down the hall, and Cecilia Libari is here somewhere. Why don't you raise your hand? I don't know where you are. And if you've got questions or comments, if you make anything, if you'd like us to get back to you about anything, make sure you give your information to them, so we can get back to you. Now, we are televising this, and that's why this, and so we're going to need questions to be asked in the microphone. We've just started televising this for a few reasons. This is the second time. Because we did get comments from people, you know, we couldn't make it, but we'd like to see what was discussed. And number two, because at one point, someone was filming part of the meetings and putting it up, but kind of selectively. So, we thought, well, if part of the meeting is going to be televised, we might as well have the whole thing. But the reaction to the first time around was very good. We got some positive feedback, so we're continuing to do that. So, in addition to the job front, we're trying to bring about economic development in our downtown, because it is a strong development opportunity. We have seen disinvestment in downtown neighborhoods for a long time, meaning the, not a lot of private money has been invested in a lot of the streets, the neighborhoods, right around downtown. Even though we have a relatively affluent community, Nashua, as compared with especially other cities in New Hampshire, and particularly, you know, we've got here in the South End, this is a relatively affluent part of the city. The downtown census district around Main Street is the poorest census district out of 293 census districts in New Hampshire. So, we see development opportunities there. Even though there is this low-income census district, in the downtown, the Main Street business district, including the Milliards, about a quarter square mile out of 30 square miles in the city, 30-plus, that square mile, quarter square mile generates $6 million in property taxes, which is disproportionate to anything else except for Daniel Webster Highway and Amherst Street. Yet, in that downtown business district, we don't really provide many services. There are few, there are very few schoolchildren, the most expensive service that we provide. We don't even pick up garbage, because it's all commercial. And we, of course, provide fire and police. So, in order to strengthen the customer base for downtown businesses and strengthen the business climate there, try to raise the property values, and in order to provide housing options, and in order to, for people who live in Nashua, and in order to try to present options that our younger people, millennial generations, Generation Z, want to live in, we've worked very hard to generate more downtown, the development of more downtown housing. And when I ran for office, I said I thought we could do 500-plus, 500 units downtown, which would add 1,000 downtown residents in four years. And we have already, we're already achieving that now with the Lofts 34 conversion on Franklin Street, the former Nashua Corp. Mill, with a project on Marshall Street, with Riverfront Landing, and with other spot, smaller developments. And we have other housing projects that we think we can bring forward, that we're working on right now, one in, a couple in the so-called Rail Yard District, which is the east portion of Main Street. But the effort here is to strengthen the business climate downtown, make Nashua a more attractive place for everyone to live, build a stronger downtown tax base, which in the end can help provide more than $6 million to provide, to help subsidize, provide services throughout the community. We're trying to make, we've made progress in schools. We added full-day kindergarten for all of our elementary schools, which we did not have, like here at Bicentennial, for the first time. When I was mayor before, we started half-day kindergarten. That was in 1987. And now, and then we waited 30 years or so, and then we went to full day in all the elementary schools. So, that, of course, has been a major step forward. But we want to now upgrade our middle schools. And so, the project that we're looking at and considering very carefully is the Elm Street Middle School, and the other middle schools, Fairgrounds and Pennachuck. We want to either upgrade the Elm Street facility or replace it. So, there's a cost analysis going on right now. But because of many, of many factors, it may be both educationally better and actually less expensive to replace Elm Street as opposed to rebuilding it. And therefore, there is land down off Buck Meadow Road, which could serve as a new middle school site. And when that project goes forward, we want to also improve the facilities at the other two middle schools, so that we can, across the city, upgrade our middle school level. And hopefully, and I would like to see a strengthened curriculum at the middle school level at the same time, so that we can offer the best middle school education for every student at every school, every day. John Chapitas, who used to be the superintendent, is here. Thank you, John, for coming. He helped make a lot of improvements in our schools when he was around, and so I really appreciate him coming. We're, we have a riverfront master plan, which we are beginning to unveil and beginning to implement, to really bring out the beauty of the Nashua River for the benefit of everyone, a great natural asset that the city has, but which has, over time, been underutilized. And if you want to see that master plan, we, you can look for it at the website, or we could talk more about it tonight. At some of the others, town, at the ward meetings, we've actually had a presentation at that. But I know here, we want to spend time on South End traffic issues, the Flatley development, so we didn't bring that to tonight. One area where we have made a lot of progress is in the paving of Nashua's streets. The, for many years, we were doing five, six miles a year, you know, going on for decades. And that was against a supply of 300 miles of streets. So, we're on a 50, 60-year replacement schedule. So, we got very far behind, because a street doesn't last 50 or 60 years. Last year, we paved 25 miles. This year, we're going to pave 31 miles of streets, plus we're going to, what we call crack seal, another 30 miles, 31 miles, which helps to preserve those streets. And Lauren Byers, who's here from Public Works, is going to make a short presentation on paving, so you can get a little more in-depth knowledge about that. Last night, the board passed the city budget up 2.8%, but 2.8 to 2.9%. But one line item really drove that entire, most of that increase, or half of it. And that is one line item, which is the cost of health care for city employees, went up $3 million, or about 3.3, or about 11%. But within the budget, we were able to continue with the paving. We were, we were able to continue with kindergarten, of course. We were able to add some ELL teachers that we don't have now, which help to educate kids who don't speak fluent English, in English, so that they can attend regular classes. We're funding the master plan for the first time in 20 years, what we call Imagine 2020. And the remainder of the budget that is not that one line item was up 1.6%. We are working very closely with our legislative delegation on a lot of fronts to advance rail, to bring more education aid to the city, and they are doing a great job. And we do have two of our Ward Eight representatives here, those being Lotham Anjupudi, who is here, right here, and Laura Tilerski. They have helped to push through a House budget, which would make a huge difference for the city of Nashua in terms of aid. So, I'd like to give them a round of applause for the great job they've done. Now, I thought I would mention a couple things. We, over the course of the last couple of years, have gotten a lot of accolades. 2018, Nashua was named one of the safest places to retire in the country. 2018, we were named one of the best run, the ninth-best-run city in the United States. 2018, we were named the best place for millennials in Hillsborough County. In 2018, we were named the most diverse or most inclusive city in New Hampshire. In 2018, Nashua has some of the lowest crime in mid-sized cities across the United States. In 2017, Nashville, Manchester, were named one of the happiest places in the United States. And I know that's true here in Langashur Heights. In 2017, Nashua was named the safest city in the country. And in 2017, Nashua was named one of the best cities to live in America. And something really unusual happened the other day, and that was that one of the big revenue items, other than property taxes, in New Hampshire, we are extremely property tax reliant. And that's why the legislative delegation has been doing such a good job, because finally, they are reversing this trend of every year, more costs onto, state costs onto the local communities, raising property taxes. One of our, one of our revenue sources is automobile registrations. So, for the first time, a McLaren was registered in Nashua, which is a $959,000 sports car, which brought in $22,500 on one vehicle for the city of Nashua. So, we've talked to that guy, and we're asking him, could you do a whole fleet of those? And with that, we could fund, you know, early school, pre-K education for every kid in Nashua or something. So, those are some of the things that are going on. And I, now, what I'd like to do is let, have Lauren come up to give a short presentation. Then, we're going to ask Mary Ann and Lori if they have anything they'd like to add, and then we'll go to your questions or comments.
So, hello. I was going to do a PowerPoint, but I feel, since we have so many standing people, we'll skip the PowerPoint tonight. I'm going to let you off the hook. But I'm here to talk about paving. So, I don't know if you've noticed, but there are areas in the city where we're paving. I imagine you've been stuck in 45 minutes on Spitbrook Road, and you call me, and I tell you, we'll drive around and go to Exit Four, and don't go down that way. But, so this year, we're going to pave, like Mayor Donches alluded to, over 30 miles. We normally pave between three and seven. So, this is a huge undertaking. We are planning on paving over 40 streets this year alone. Most of them are the large arterial streets, Amherst Street, Spitbrook Road, Broad Street. We're hoping to get to Kinsley before the snow flies and finish that one up, because that doesn't have any issues out there. So, anyway, what we wanted to explain to you was mostly that a lot of you call in with questions, why isn't my street being paved? My street is worse than the street three blocks down, and blah, blah. You know, I get it. You are right, and that is a very good question. The reason we're not paving your street, paving has three phases. Basically, there's two that we're using, which is the reclamation, which means the street is so bad, we have to dig into the dirt and start from scratch. It is hugely expensive and takes a lot of time. Then, we have the resurfacing, where we just need to go down a couple of inches, like you see on Broad Street or over here at Spitbrook, right? And then, we can go back in and fill that. It takes a lot less time, and it is huge savings of money. So, some of the smaller streets that are reclamation, we're putting off, because if we do them right away, because they're in the worst shape, we'll be spending a ton of money, and by the time we get to the resurfacing streets, they will be reclamation. So, it does seem like we have no idea what we're doing, and that we're being, you know, choosy about where we're doing. We know somebody in that neighborhood, which I actually know a lot of people in this neighborhood, but nonetheless. So, just so you know, we, every year, we reevaluate your streets, every single year. A third of them are reevaluated. They're on a rotation. If something catastrophic happens, we change your rating. So, we have something called a PCI. It's called Paving Condition Index. Every street in the city has been rated, and it goes 0 to 100. Last year, we paved streets that were primarily 32 or below, zero being the worst. Most city streets fall somewhere between 40 and 70. So, yes, your street is bad, and there are lots of potholes, and they keep reopening in the same spots. But we're doing the best we can to address everybody. The worst streets are in a three-year, you know, window. We're hoping to complete them in three years. But everybody will see paving in the 10-year program that we have. The first five years has already been funded, thank you very much. And we hope to continue getting funding to finish the project. And we, the mayor alluded also to crack sealing, right? So, that should help our streets last longer. We did not do maintenance on our streets the way we should have for the last 30 years. And now, we're maintaining them. So, we're fixing them, we're redoing them, and we're going to maintain them. So, hopefully, instead of getting 15 years, we'll get 25 or 30 or more. And I won't be in this job, and I won't have to ever talk about this again. So, so, does anybody have any questions about paving? I think most here know me, but...
Basic question. From an engineering standpoint, there seems to be no work going on. What if we added 5% more resin or something like that to the tar? Would it last 10 times longer or two times longer? Who does the work in that area?
Right.
All you do is continue to redo the same thing over and over and over again without any improvement. That's the way I look at it.
So, we have our engineers, and we've also hired specialists that have more expertise in the field than we do. And they're constantly taking core samples, they're looking at the asphalt they're putting down. There is a minimum requirement that it has to reach to be acceptable to the city. And I don't know if any of you go on Broad...
Where you're kept up with the hose, what does that mean?
To the engineers that are working on the project. As an example, Broad Street, they put asphalt down, it's called binder, which after they mill it out, that's the first layer, and that sits for a while, then they come back and finish it off. Broad Street, when they put the binder down, the asphalt was terrible, and they had to re-mill it and put down the right mixture. So, we're constantly watching that. We're taking samples at every project. We're having them analyzed by companies that deal in that.
But why did the binder get put on a bad surface? That's the question, you know? Why, why does that happen? That's what the problem is.
Well, in the past, we didn't have a lot of money. So, when we did do work on our streets, we probably didn't do it the way we're doing it now. So, now, we're doing it the right way. We're reclaiming them if they need to. We're going through the entire process, we're not putting a Band-Aid on it with a mill and fill, which is what you've seen in the past.
So, we are, so...
I see streets now, you pave them, and a year later, they start to fail, they start to fail, start to crack, and that kind of thing, a year later. Why? I mean, there's got to be a reason. You put 5% more in it, maybe it'll last twice as long, maybe we can do more streets.
Well, you need to point out specific examples. Now, we do, we are, we are inspecting at two different stages in the, in the paving Nashua is only one of two municipalities at this point that inspect the quality of the asphalt in the plant where the asphalt is being made.
What does that mean?
We inspect to make sure it has the right consistency, so it will have maximum staying power.
What does that mean, the right consistency? That's what I'm saying. That's the research that has to go in. What does that mean?
So, the engineers are specialized in this. They go to school for this, they're trained in this. This is their entire colleges, universities.
There are, there are parameters, that it has to have a certain percentage of tar, kind of the oil product. It can only have a certain percentage of sand, it can only have a certain percentage of...
But how do you know those are the best ones? That's what I'm saying. That's what the issue really is.
The science...
How do you know? What science? I've been a materials engineer for 75 years, so I'm just asking you, what's being done in the road there?
So, the state...
Certainly, in a factory, you build the process. You never build a, like, we do roads.
So, the state and federal government have guidelines that we follow for the consistency of asphalt to be at its best for applying, and we do follow those.
Yeah, but that changes with climate and everything, of course. Certainly, it's different in Florida than it is up here.
Right, that's correct.
Or different in Alaska.
Yes.
That's...
Absolutely.
Depending on where we are, I understand that.
Yes.
And we inspect also on the site.
We do.
Meaning, when the asphalt goes down, there are samples taken there, too. So, it's sort of both ends of the process.
There are streets in Nashua probably haven't been paved for 75 years.
Oh, yeah. Very true.
Why? Why do they last 75 years, and something else doesn't last 15? I mean, that's, that's the question, why?
I don't know. I wasn't here 75 years ago, but I don't know what they did.
Yes, yes.
Streets look great, congratulations. Sidewalks are showing signs of age. Any plans to revisit those?
Sidewalks definitely are a problem. Now, we have 200 miles of sidewalks around the city, a lot of them in not great shape. We do put some money into trying to improve those every year. We're trying to make Nashua more pedestrian-friendly, especially in the more concentrated population areas. But most of the money, at this point, is going into the paving to be, because we see that as a more critical need. Now, as time goes on, I think we've got to do more with sidewalks. You know, you could probably point to many places where repairs are needed, and there is, you know, a program of evaluating sidewalks, but we are, you know, if we're doing 30 miles of streets, there's no way we're doing 30 miles of sidewalks, you know what I mean? So, it is an infrastructure need that we need to improve, but it is an infrastructure, portion of the infrastructure we need to improve. But we thought that streets are more important, and so we're putting the maximum amount we can there, while trying to main, you know, have a, have a maintenance fix-it program that certainly is not as extensive as what we're doing with the streets.
You're also doing it in terms of wintertime, when you're paving the, I mean, snow plowing and applying sand before, salt before, kind of helping with the wear and tear.
Yes.
And we've had a very severe freeze...
Yes. So, we have a new brine program to help maintain our roads better. It's better for the environment, as far as putting salt down on the roads. It also sticks to the road, so we can put it down 24 hours in advance, and it will stick to the road. It's brand-new. We had to toy with it this year, because it was new to us as well. And we had to get the equipment, and we had to figure out what levels were the right. But the, the, this is interesting, the temperature of the asphalt determines the consistency of the mixture. So, we can put that down 20, you can see our truck spring, you probably saw that last winter, and it's this white, and 24 hours in advance, it sticks to the road, and so the ice doesn't grab the road like it has with salt, which bounces off the road when you put it down. We all see that happening, hits our windshields, and yeah. So, our new brine program, hopefully, will help maintain our roads as we go forward, especially our new roads. Yes.
Will Kinsley and Ald be done this year?
Yes. So, Kinsley Street, that really needs to get done. And we are waiting for the, all right. So, Kinsley is one of our oldest streets. The infrastructure under that street was horrendous. Everything had to be replaced, gas, sewer, and water. And when they would open up the street, they would say, okay, this is going to take us a week, and it was three weeks because of the deterioration in the street. They found collapsed pipes, pipes that went to nowhere, the list goes on.
More gas leaks recently.
Gas leaks.
Yeah.
So, we let them do the work, because it needs to be done. And there's no use in paving a street if they're just going to rip it up next year because there's a leak. So, that is what's held up Kinsley, and we know that. It's in terrible shape. We're hoping, we hoped to pave it last year, but they couldn't get the utility work done in time. So, yes, we are hoping to get that done before November, before the snow flies.
Even that's a hedge, because my last promise was we were definitely going to have it by August. Now, Lauren is telling me for the first time, it might be November. What, are you kidding me?
It's a shame that this is being recorded, is all I'm saying right now.
What about Ald?
Ald is also on the list. I don't know how, I don't have any more updated information on Ald yet, but as you can see, there's a lot of utility work going on in that area as well.
I think that it's a safety issue on the...
Now, it helps for the, for the, any TV audience, if you ask your question into this, look at this microphone.
Yeah, that's what I'm using. I don't need it.
Okay. I'm just saying that I think it's a safety issue here on Bicentennial for the kids walking up and down the street, the sidewalks here. Part of the sidewalk down on Bicentennial is totally gone. So, I think it's more of a safety issue, too.
Yeah, on Bicentennial Street?
Yes.
Yeah, right over there. That's in a lot of our areas.
We'll take a look at that.
The section is gone.
Because you certainly asked about it, and somebody, Carrie or somebody, will write it down, and we will check that.
We actually have a sidewalk list, like we do a street list. We went around and we ranked them. Now, we don't have any money to fix them, but we do know what needs to get fixed.
But it's, since it's right adjacent to the school...
We have a lot of those, actually, in the school walking paths. It is very difficult, especially up at the North End, where the trees that are now 50, 75 years old are knocking the cement slabs up. So, we do know there's a big problem, and as soon as we can get funding, we'll, we'll go straight away on that. But I will add that to the list. I'll go take a look... But I will add that to the list, I'll go take a look and add it.
Thanks.
Pat, it's Suzanne Wilson.
Oh, hi.
Hi, I just wanted to add to that. The neighbor directly across from me had their pool removed, and the big equipment went right through the sidewalk. And then we had the icy winter, and then the culvert up here at the top overflowed, and then caused a river, the ice, and the kids were in the street. It was horrible, and thank you, Pat.
So if that happens again, where you're getting icing in the road due to any of the... We'll send our trucks out.
And I have, I have called the street.
Yes, we will send our trucks out. Always call us on that.
That's good, is that's new 24-hour brine.
Yes, that will help. It should help us out a lot. We're hoping to see a better year this year. Plus, the weather needs to get better, but...
Good luck with that.
Changes every year. Anybody else, any other paving questions?
So, John, why don't we take one more paving question, then move on to another subject? We could return to paving if necessary. John?
Well, mine isn't necessarily directly related to paving, but I am concerned about the oversight that occurred on Bicentennial. Last year, the city approved a subdivision of a piece of property on Bicentennial, I mean, on, excuse me, on, on Browning. And, uh, the city, I believe, didn't provide proper oversight to the development of that plot of land, it was subdivided into two plots. And I raised some concerns, as did my wife, about how that land was shaped and how the gravel on that property was gonna flow into Browning. Last fall, it did. Now, this year, the property has vegetation on it, so it has slowed down, but the hill, and we've been on the hill since 1970, has always had a drainage problem, because back then, they didn't, I don't know whether they didn't know how to, but there are all kinds of springs at the top of that hill, and it just seems like the city, the, you know, whether it was engineering or, or the planning department, or whatever department has responsibility for the oversight of a subdivision, really let, let people down on that particular street.
Okay. And do you remember, uh, we can look that up, but where, what was the approximate address of that?
The Whalen?
The Whalen property?
Okay. And it's on Browning, you said?
Right, right across from where the Davidsens lived at one time.
We'd be glad to check that out. Now, Lori or Mary Ann, do you have anything you'd like to, uh, add at this point?
I don't have anything to add, except I'm really impressed with the turnout here tonight, no matter what the issue. Thank you all for being here. It's important that the city gets your feedback, because without it, it's, it's really kinda hard for us to know what you need from us. So, thank you for coming out tonight, and, um, we hope to at least address your concerns, if not now, in the near future. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, and thank all of you for coming. I know what the issue is in the room, and, um, the mayor and I talked about it earlier today. But I just want to add something to something the mayor talked about in terms of what's going on downtown. Library Plaza is being redeveloped, and there are plans online for you to take a look at that. And I would suggest you look at what they're planning on doing there. There's talk about a playground, new lighting, redoing the elevations there and doing the lawn, and the city, as Mayor Donches and I have discussed, and Director Cummings from Economic Development is here, he joined us, as well as Director Marshon. We've all talked about the need to keep that as the green space in the city. You know, we have Greeley Park, but Greeley Park's not downtown, and if you come and go from the library, you know Library Plaza is really important as a green space downtown. And we're also looking at improving the connections with the Court Street building. So I would suggest you go online and take a look at that, as well as, last night, we had the presentation on the lighting plan as part of the Riverwalk, um, project, or the Riverfront project. So there are a lot of things going on in terms of improving walkability and just making it, um, a pleasant and safe place to be. So I would encourage you to go online and, and take a look at those projects, and I believe some of them you can give input...
Definitely, all of them.
Online, so, um, that's being tracked, so, I don't like this kinda light pole, did you think about putting benches there? If you've lived here, people have said, I remember when, and so that's the kinda feedback we want, because we want something that you feel welcomes you and, um, just adds to, um, the aesthetics of the city. So, um, please go online and take a look at that project also. I know that there have been concerns raised, and I have raised concerns, some of us have had conversations either in person or electronically about, um, the latest proposed development off of, um, the Shadow Brook stub, which comes off of Spitbrook, or off of Spindelwick. And, um, there are concerns about houses, there's concerns about traffic, um, there's concerns about access to that piece of property, and I know there are certainly concerns about, um, the enrollment in the school, and, and what will happen as a result of that. A number of you in, in conversation with me have said, you're kind of tired with this, okay, we're gonna do this, and now we're gonna do that, and your desire to see a master plan for this area. So we kind of have a sense of what's going on. And I would say, I agree with you, we need to have a master plan. That conversation has started, has been going on actually, with Mr. Flatley for at least a couple of years. I've been involved in some of those conversations, so I know the city has been involved in those conversations. Um, and, and he's aware of the concerns about traffic and the need for a master plan to look at not only traffic, but school and our resources, fire and police. What, what is the total impact of that property and how it's developed on the city? And certainly, as we go forward with a master plan and even trying to budget, you know, what are we gonna do five years out? What do we expect to have happening there, and how are we going to address that? We need to know what's going on there. So I'm going to give this back to the mayor, um, and then, I don't know if you want questions or, show, well, does everyone have a sense of what's being proposed?
No.
No? Okay, so, alright.
No, you want to start with that?
Okay, alright, I, I'm not, I'm not sure how far information has traveled. Mr. Flatley had a meeting, and he invited abutters, and, um, he, by law, is only required to invite the people who are direct abutters. I asked him to cast wider net, similar to when we did the development on Chaucer, recognizing that the abutters are both sides of the streets and some of the side streets, so he did that. I would say there were probably, I don't know, 35, 40 people there, maybe close to 50, the, the location was halfway full, and I know it holds about 100 people. He presented a plan, an overview, but specifically, he presented a plan to develop the northern end of his property, which, which abuts the top of the hill or the southern end of Spindelwick, you know, Spindelwick, Shadow Brook, and Cameron. So if you come across Shadow Brook and you look across, you see like this big, open, green space. If you look on a map, it's actually a public road stub. It was put in there so that property could eventually be developed. So it's always been on the plan, and as someone who lives up there said to me, we knew there were gonna be houses there, but wow, there's a lot of houses, and we need to think about impact on the neighborhood. One of the plans he had there had like 60 house, houses on it, he talked about 60. An original plan he flew by, some of us had 36, the last plan, the other plan he had there had 46 houses. When he last talked to me about this, when he was setting up the meeting, he was going to sell these fam, these homes, they were going to be individually owned family homes. At the meeting, um, he announced that they were going to be rentals. And I know some people have said to me, well, it's residential, how can you have rentals? And so, um, today, I confirmed with Director Marshon that as long as he meets the code requirements for the R-18 and R-14, he can build those houses and rent them out, or he can form a condo community. Right now, the only public road is that stub of Shadow Brook. He was talking about making his streets private. So there's that. We had a conversation with him about traffic on Spindelwick, on Cameron, on Timberline. And we all know we have our secret ways of cutting through the community, be it across Peel, down Browning, across Peel, down Shelley, if I wanna get to exit one, I may keep going to go down Bicentennial. We all have our way to kinda get around traffic. I have tried to impress upon him the volume of traffic, those houses will add to this community. And, um, in the past week, I've been looking at Timberline, and I know, this morning, I had to wait for four cars at 8:06 to come down Timberline before I could pull out of Pinehurst, and then there were five cars in the storage lane to make a right turn onto East Dunstable.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And you all experience that. I'm not telling you anything you don't know. And I know there are people who have told me, they don't come down Timberline anymore, they go Shelley and Browning, so it's easier to get down East Dunstable, and I say, thanks, you're making me wait at Timberline.
And as they should, somebody who lives on Timberline, it's not just long hill...
Right.
It's everybody coming across the hill...
Right.
And down, and it's treacherous.
Exactly.
And people fly up and they fly down.
Right, right.
It's a nightmare.
It is.
The thought of this is just...
I know.
And if we're gonna add to all the vehicles that are already in our neighborhood, more vehicles trying to cut through our neighborhood?
Right. And so, so those traffic concerns are there, and, and we need to address those. There's also...
Noise, noise and...
Noise and property value.
Well, we've talked about noise and property value with, you know, taking trees down and how that's going to impact what's going on. The other part, and I just lost my thought, I'm sorry. So there's traffic, there's, um, just having the houses there and the impact of the community on having rental property. After his meeting, his, one of his people said to me, well, we never sign a lease for more, for less than a year. And I said, but, we all break leases, and we pay and we break our lease. So I tried to impress upon them that rental property, even if it's renting for $3,000 or $3,500 a month, does not make a neighborhood stable.
No.
Losing trust.
Right, and we've talked about the capacity of the school, and, and that's something, unfortunately, the school district's going to have to look at, but again, in master planning, then we at least have a sense.
What is the process to move this forward or stop it? Do we have any say in this?
Right now, Mr. Flatley is just holding meetings with the people he invites to his abutter meetings. He's gotta get a plan together. My experience with working with him with the Chaucer development is that he was responsive to concerns. And so, he needs to hear very clearly from the city, there are some things they expect, and he has to hear very clearly from the neighbors, how they're feeling about it. Once he moves something to the planning board, it's then going to be up to the planning board, and that's the, the public forum for everyone to go and have input.
Mary Ann?
Yes?
Coming, I guess, you know, you're coming off exit five, and we're coming down that way, and you take a left, you know, that little section you can take a left onto Timberline?
Yes, off of exit four, right. And that's gonna back up too, yeah.
But that only holds four cars.
I know.
And then going to work in the morning, already, people coming down Timberline, you know, they're waiting to get on, I'm going across the light there, and it's already a red light at the other end, so now I'm like, do I stay here at the line, or do I go behind them and I kinda go sideways?
Right.
I mean, what is the impact on traffic?
Well, and...
Are there studies?
Well, we're gonna have to ask for studies, and, and, and I, we've already had the conversation, and we don't want another light there, but that all needs to be looked at. And I encounter the same thing you do. This morning, I had to go farther right because all the lanes were full, and like the person in front of me decided to just stop because they didn't know which lane they were going to. So those storage lanes coming and going on East Dunstable are already, as we all know it, capacity. If you're...
But they don't hold many cars.
No, they don't. And if you're coming, if you're coming off of the ramp to make the right to go to Timberline, the light at Harris Road, there are times when the left turn lane there is backed up, and you can't, you can't make your right to then get into the left lane.
I'm going down that road...
Yeah.
From four o'clock on, because...
Right.
You're stuck in a whole line of traffic coming to take a right back onto our roads.
Right.
It's just a mess.
Yeah.
As a resident, I want them like bring up public concerns, I think that's something that you really need to think seriously, but also as an employee of this school, that's frightening too, because we're already bursting at the seams.
Right.
And I, I'm curious about what the impact is gonna be. We could, we can't take any more kids.
And...
Where it's at, I don't know.
Right, I know. And I've seen your class sizes, and again, this is part of why we need to have a sense of what he's really doing up there, because those of you who are involved in the Chaucer Road, the apartments, the first set of apartments, um, he then said, well, my next thing is I'm going to put in an R&amp;D building, I'm gonna put it in into phases. At the meeting we were at, and you were there, you heard this, um, he said, well, you know, there's really not a market for R&amp;D, so I'm looking at putting in some townhouse buildings and some apartments with parking underneath.
Sounds like he keeps changing his mind.
That, that totally changes the, the impact on the neighborhood. And as the mayor said, we're looking for jobs. I mean, we do need housing, but we're also looking for jobs, and that's part of, of what we're looking at there. And the one thing, I, I just remembered my thought. The other thing he mentioned for people who were there, you heard him talk about, well, eventually, the houses in this neighborhood, people will exit on a ramp, there'll be a ramp access to the highway. Mr. Flatley has been working, I've been at two meetings where DOT has said to him, this is what we need, he's working on that, but there's some, there, it's, it's kind of stalled. And so, we have no idea when that's coming forward. There is no plan yet that's even been presented to DOT to say, okay, this is what I'm proposing, this is what I'll pay for, this is, you know, what the state would have to do, and this is why it meets the test for being in the public good. And the DOT has been very clear that it has to connect to a public road, and right now, all of his roads are private. At the meeting, he said, oh, no, um, my roads, the fire department has approved them. Well, they've approved them to bring fire trucks in on private property, but they do not require, meet the requirements for public roads. So there's a whole list of things that aren't quite falling into place.
There are questions back there. A gentleman there, too.
I'll let you pass it around.
Okay. So, my children have left Bicentennial, but I agree with Ruth, I think that was Ruth back there.
Yeah.
People should be very concerned about the school, and to me, that's still very important. So could we say to the planning board, this cannot be approved until you rezone all the schools, or redistrict all the schools? Like, at what point? Like, could you stall, could you stall it so much? Because the schools are so important, these children are our future, and this school is bursting at the seams.
Right.
So is there a way to say, Flatley, you do not get to do this until the schools have been, uh, changed?
And I'm looking at Director Cummings back there, but my answer is, the planning board doesn't really look at that, but the Board of Ed could certainly make a statement about the impact on the school.
Well, the planning board definitely looks at traffic.
At traffic, but not schools, yeah.
They will need to have a, well, I've got this...
Oh, you might.
They will need to justify or have a traffic study to show the impact on the roads we've already talked about. So, that will definitely have to be presented. It is an interesting question as to whether a planning board can deny something based upon the fact that there's not enough room at the local school. I mean, we are, they, the planning board is constrained by state law. I mean, all the rules are basically created by state statutes and state court decisions. And right this moment, I can't actually answer that question because that has not been presented in that way before. So, I, we'd be glad to look into that, talk to the legal department about it, see what the planning board's options really are in that regard. Yes?
Can a planning board delay or at least require that that second access road be fully developed conceptually and approved by both the Department of Transportation and be funded and the, and the houses not be built until that road is in place?
And when you say "that road," you mean the access ramp onto the highway?
The access road, yeah.
Well, I think it depends on what the traffic study shows. Again, we are, you know, there are a lot of court decisions regarding issues like this and regarding the ability of a community to require offset improvements. We do believe, we, we do believe that that access road would help traffic down here a lot. So, the issue there is, Flatley says he's willing to pay for an on-ramp going from so-called Dozer Road onto the highway. As Mary Ann mentioned, one issue is that the state, which is sort of on board with this, wants the connection to be to a public street, which Dozer Road is not at this time. So, that would need to be, that would need to be addressed. I believe Mr. Flatley is saying that he does not want to pay for the companion, which would be an off-ramp onto the highway to Dozer Road. He only wants an on-ramp. DOT, it seems, wants to have both or neither. Wouldn't you say that's accurate?
Yeah. DOT understands he will only pay for one, but they're asking him in his engineering planning, in his development of the plan, to present plans for both, with the understanding that he will only pay for one.
So, so, what, what they're basically saying, and Tim Cummings has been at these meetings too, what they're basically saying, DOT is, "Look, I mean, if you're gonna have an off-ramp, you, if you gotta have, if you're gonna have an on-ramp, you've gotta have a companion off-ramp." Now, as long as that this public street thing can be satisfied, if Flatley says, "Well, I'm not gonna pay for the off-ramp," I think the city would continue, would consider paying for, for one of the ramps. Because we, we know that traffic in the South End is an issue, or, you know, Exit 1 has been a problem for a long time. And anything we could do to relieve the situation on Exit 1 and make people's commuting time easier and just their, their drive around time better, the city's willing certainly to participate in that. And if the deal was, Flatley would pay for one of the ramps. If the city paid for the other, I think we'd move forward and do that to try to just improve things overall.
That would be huge.
But we, but we do need to, you know, get DOT approval. We need them to say, "Okay." We need Flatley to say that he would allow the off-ramp, and we need to satisfy this public street issue. So, all of that is in discussion. Obviously, this isn't gonna happen tomorrow. But the reason that Tim Cummings and Mary Ann have been in these meetings is we're trying to bring this about because we think that those exits, entrance, exit, even though on just one side of the highway, would reduce the traffic burden on Exit 1, on Spitbrook Road, and the South End in general.
Miss...
Yes.
What makes you think people believe anything he says? The house was immediately closing Gateway Hills, and he made assurances to everybody that it'd be minimal impact on traffic. And if you go down there between 4:00 and 5:30, this freaking line's everywhere. The traffic is horrendous already at the end there. And you can't even get out of there because I have a client that I have to visit around that time. And he can't get out of that place. And now he's going to propose a housing development. He's saying, "Yeah, it won't be a big deal." I, I don't trust him at all. How do you address that?
Well, the, the, how do you address it? Will you require an independent traffic study?
Well, they had a study. And they said, "Yeah, it's okay." And then they, they allowed the development, they got tax revenue coming in, and now it sucks for everybody who wants to go down there.
Well, that's a problem. So, we have to just look at it very carefully. We need to have our engineers review it. And I, I don't mean, I don't know what happened back then, but...
I think, I think though, this, this goes to the point of like, master planning. Because Mr. Flatley, when we were having those conversations, conversations about Chaucer and the, the Gateway Hills apartments, and the development there, said, "Well, you know, I can only do," and Mr. Kane said this also, "I can, we can only do so much development. Once we get to the R&amp;D building, we're not going to be able to do any more." But things have changed there, and we're still kind of working off these numbers of this traffic study that was done then. And so, again, it's kind of being piecemealed together. And now we're hearing, "Well, the R&amp;D building, I want to do residential." Totally different set of numbers. So, it's, it, I think is something we need to take a, a second look at. And as the mayor said, we need to have our traffic study done to look at what those numbers are and be very, very specific about what it is we're looking for. I just took the mic from this gentleman because someone told me, "People don't realize that the property we're talking about off this Shadow Brook stub is zoned residential. Part of it is zoned R-18, and part of it is zoned R-40." So, that, there's, the zoning is already there for residential.
So, R-18 means it's a minimum lot size of 18,000 square feet. R-40 means minimum 40,000 square feet.
Right.
And that, that section that he's talking about, which, there's been no plans submitted to the city. Mary Ann took a picture of what was at the meeting, and so he looked at that. But of the area that he's talking about, half of it approximately is R-40, and about half of it is R-18 currently.
So, how could he build something where he's going to charge rent?
Well, that was my question, and Mayor Johnson, Director Cummings can help me. But I wanted to clarify that because Director Marshall and I have been having this conversation. We can control what he does, and it has to meet zoning requirements, but we really can't control how he uses it. Okay? So, if he built 20 houses and he sold 10 of them, rather than having the other 10 empty, he could rent them. Okay? So, we...
As a single family.
As a single family home. Right. So, we can, we can't control that. I mean, it's just like if you decide to move... Right. Right.
You can't let the government build it.
Right.
You can build a single family home in a single family zoned area and charge rent.
Right. So, he could build 45 single family homes there and have one-year leases or five-year, whatever he wants. And, and that's the part we can't zone. So, he could build single family homes as a condo community.
But DOT, I think, can...
Detached condos. He could do that, set it up like that. All we can control is the lot size and, and what it's, it's used for. I'm gonna give this back to you. Thank you very much.
So, my question, and I'm by far from an attorney in real estate, but isn't there some sort of a requirement, if you are putting in rentals, that there's a subsidy, or some of them have to be subsidized?
Yeah.
I could be wrong.
He said, "He does not fall into that. He doesn't, it couldn't..."
Yeah.
None of the, the fee section.
When, when, so you're, so the question is, if someone builds rental housing, does some of it have to be more affordable subsidized housing? And the answer to that question, to that simple question, is no. People can build multifamily, single family to be rented. If it, if it conforms with zoning, they do not have to have an affordable housing component. However, oftentimes, when projects go forward, there are financial incentives offered to create affordable units. For example, when the Cotton Mill project in the Mill Yard went forward about six years ago, I would say, there were a number of, a mixture of incentives, home funds and some other things. So, the agreement, home funds are a kind of a HUD allocation of so-called home funds that come to the city and that can be used by the city to create affordable units. So, home funds and other incentives were used to create an obligation that 50% of those units be affordable. And they are. The project that is going now on Marshall Street at the corner of East Hollis, 150 units, is entirely so-called workforce housing, all affordable, no more than 80% of AMI, which means area median income. Because there were, there were sort of a mixture of incentives. There was some stuff from, some subsidy from the Housing Finance Authority. The city contributed $200,000 in these HUD home funds. And other incentives at the state level were combined to enable the project to be an entirely workforce affordable housing project, again, meaning maximum income of 80% of AMI. So, it depends upon the project, but the simple creation of rental units does not carry with it the obligation to assign or create some percentage of affordable units.
But it does come with devaluation of properties.
It, it comes with what?
Does what you're saying, so if the subsidies don't come with that, but devaluation of properties are gonna result from that, whether it's 20 houses or 60 houses. You're devaluing our property.
Yeah, you're saying if there were rental units near you, it could affect your, your property.
Definitely.
Yes.
And the noise, yeah. Yeah.
And I'm not saying that that wouldn't occur. I'm just, you asked, "Did some need to be affordable?" And I was answering...
Right, yes, I know.
Yes, sir. Well, who's going next? Oh, he's got the mic, okay.
So, does anyone remember roughly 27 years ago when CVS wanted to put a building down where True Blue Dry Cleaners is? Okay, well, my parents, my mom, my dad, who passed away, they fought that tooth and nail, along with this entire neighborhood. Okay? And guess what? It didn't get built. Okay? So, we are not at the mercy of Flatley. Okay? So, if you truly don't want a neighborhood and more traffic in our neighborhood, and the school is bursting at the seams, then we need to fight.
Now, I would follow up that comment to say that is correct. That you, you are not, the quote, "You are not at the mercy of Flatley." I mean, at the plant, the, the, the planning board makes some of these decisions, but they are very, they, they definitely are affected when people show up and take a position on something. I mean, many of the stuff, many of the things that go before the planning board or the ZBA, the Zoning Board of Adjustment, no one is there, and, you know, oftentimes, things... Yeah, well, there, there is a butter notification.
These people, but I could give 20 people in my neighborhood who are gonna be directly affected to have no clothes.
Well, it hasn't been proposed yet. It has, it hasn't been proposed yet. But so, word would get out. So, when there is a planning board meeting, if people show up and take a position, it definitely affects the decision-making process. I mean, there's no question about it.
There's an awful lot of people in this room that are hearing this for the first time.
Yes.
Okay, to correct that, place yourself on Mary Ann's email list, and you will receive from her all the information that we're talking about tonight and a whole bunch of other things, like where the bears are and all.
But let me make it clear, there is no, there is no proposal before the city at this time. So, that's one reason that you haven't heard about it, because there's no proposal submitted. All that happened was that last Saturday, which is what, five, four days ago, the Flatley Company held a meeting for some abutters and presented some plans to that group of neighborhood residents. That's it. There's no plan submitted to the city. The planning board, the planning staff are not considering any specific plan because nothing has been submitted. So, there's been no abutter notification, there's been no effort to reach out, there's been no opportunity to come in and make your feelings known because it never has reached that point.
Is there some...
Is there a...
Where?
Yes.
30 years ago, there were, there was a negotiation with Flatley's father that imposed deep restrictions on what could be done with that land. There is a pretty restrictive environment out there.
That was further, that was further up.
Partly these lands have buffers. This does not have a buffer even on it.
All right, a question back in the back, yes. Yes, I don't know who's next. Okay, can this gentleman go ahead?
I have a quick question.
Yeah, I can repeat the question.
No, I said it's a quick question.
But I mean, I, for everyone's benefit.
Okay. To, not to put you on the spot, but based on everything you know, do you support this?
I, I am very interested in knowing what the neighborhood thinks about it.
Were you invited to the, the abutters meeting?
No.
I was just saying that Mr. Flatley never invites, like, city officials because it's his private meeting with the abutters. And because these things eventually go before city employees, and the mayor could end up having to weigh in on something for some reason, that's really the appropriate way to do it.
And I heard about it from Mary Ann, who, you know, told me about it after the fact. All right, who's next?
Okay. John and I live on Shakespeare, and we've been observing Flatley Project for many years. And we've had to deal with a number of summers where blasting has taken place all summer long. And the damage that's been done to the house has not been recognized. No one on Shakespeare certainly has been remunerated for damage. They always have an excuse. Long Hill is just one big rock. I don't know what they will come across in that area.
So, no, wait, there's some people who could not hear. So, let me just kind of basically summarize the point so far. Point so far is that there, in the past, in, over various summers, there's been a lot of blasting at the Gateway Hills Development. And kind of the basic question is, how much blasting would this result in, and what would be effects of that? Is kind of your point, right?
The granite state, what do you think? How much blasting? They blast everywhere. I can't dig down six inches without hitting boulders in my property. She just said, "We live on one big rock."
Right.
So, you know?
All right. Now, we kind of have to follow the microphone.
Giant rocks all over the neighborhood that came out of people's foundations. In front of my house, a rock came out of my foundation.
My whole property's on boulders.
It's definitely granite. No question about it.
So, Patricia, Patricia, I'm, I'm, I'm French, but, but, I was born in Paris, so please excuse me if you don't understand me. But I have, I have a message to, to leave to you. I bought my, my house because of its environment. I'm very concerned about the impact on environment, the ecosystem, the biodiversity that could be impacted by this, by this project. And also, not only because of this project, but Flatley also envisaged to have another project close to that with a, a lot of trees that will be cut. So, there has been no environmental survey and the impact on the biodiversity, where the animals will go. And we know also that cutting trees impacts oxygen, that impacts the noise around us. And I really would like that the town hall consider the impact on the biodiversity. That's our future and the future of our children. Yeah, so, that's it.
Thank you very much.
I didn't know if you wanted to say something, or...
No, I thought she made the point very well.
Okay. I just wanted to ask, so what would be a next step? I think we all have different, you know, views that are all in the same direction of what can we do? And how can we make sure we're on that list if we aren't? Anybody that isn't, and... Okay.
So, I think you get on Mary Ann's list. Again, no, no proposal has been submitted to the city, all right? So, there's not, you know, the way the development process works according to the rules that were given... Is that the city responds to development proposals that are made. And that's when, and then, and then it goes to the planning board, and there's opportunity for public input. Again, there's no proposal made, so there's really sort of, I think the thing to do is just to make sure that, that you receive notice, that you get notified when something does get submitted, if it does, you know?
And that would be typically how? Through our alderman, or through some other mechanism?
Usually through your alderman. There's a butter notification that can usually spread around because then a butter can tell other people. If you give us your name at the mayor's office, we can try to notify you as well. So, I think there's various ways you could find out.
Things are also posted in the paper. You know, if you look in the paper, you'll see all those notices. And so, we post in the paper probably.
I can tell you for sure, if you show up with half the number of people that are here at the planning board, you will affect the development decisions. There's no question about it.
Be the nosy neighbor there. Be the nosy neighbor and show up at the meeting.
I guess, I have one question, and I know I don't have the mic, but oh, thanks. I have one question, because I've gotten twenty-seven, twenty-eight emails from people. And I thank you, and I'm sorry sometimes I don't respond till late at night, but it's kind of how it is. So, but a number of you have said, we can't keep doing this, a piece at a time, a piece at a time. We think we know what's going on, and we don't, and then he changes the plan. So I'm just wondering, and I don't know if you want to do a show of hands or what, but do you think we, like, keep going forward with, okay, let's develop this piece, and then do this piece? Or do you think we should really push for a master plan and say, we need to know? Okay.
So, in terms of affecting the development process, as I said, it helps to have as many people as there as possible, but it also helps to kind of get together in advance and organize your presentation and your thoughts, so that it's not just totally random. If you want to strongly make the point that there should be a master plan for the whole area, you decide who's going to speak on that issue, and you have two or three other people speak on the same issue, and you kind of organize your presentation so that, you know, it flows well, and it's pretty coherent. No one talks for thirty minutes, you know, points are made pretty briefly in two or three minutes. Another person gets up, makes maybe a similar point. And, you know, you maybe reaffirm the point a few times, but you don't do it a hundred times. So you kind of organize this in a way that is most persuasive, is the most effective. I mean, the numbers alone will have an effect, but to meet and decide what you want to say and kind of organize the presentation so that, you know, you know who's going first, who's going second, who's going third, who's gonna finish up. Then there's a rebuttal, you know, understand the planning board process. There's, the plan is presented, then there's opposition, then there's support again, then there's rebuttal. Understand that process so that, you know, you know who's gonna be saying what in general terms is the way to be most effective. So be organized. Figure out in advance what you're gonna do, what you're gonna say, what points you're gonna make. And show up in force.
At what point does the community say to the city, your, the plan's been turned in, and you're looking at it, and you're doing your technical review. At what point do the residents say, well, they have thought great, but we want the city to do a traffic study? At what point in the process? Once you get the formal plan from him, and then you hold the plan until you get the results of our traffic?
Because you don't know what to study until you get the plan. I mean, you know, is it two units? Is it two hundred? You know, there's, you need to know what's being proposed in order to analyze the effect.
You mentioned an off-ramp now, as well as an on-ramp. That was never mentioned. So that's a whole nother...
That is a more longer-term issue, yes, no question about it. You were at the meeting, right? Now, that is a longer-term discussion. It is, you know, it is kind of related, but it is not directly tied to this proposal that's been discussed. I mean, that sort of could go ahead without this development. I mean, it is an issue that's been in discussion for a couple of years, I would say. Tim, what do you think the first meeting with the DOT on that was?
First meeting with the DOT on the...
On the off-ramp. A year ago, maybe?
I would say a year and a half.
Year and a half. So this is something, this is the discussion the city is trying to facilitate and encourage, because putting aside whatever happens without the development, with nothing else, these ramps would be good, because it would take traffic off Spitbrook Road. So if we can get a developer, if we can get DOT to agree that this could take place, if we can get a developer to pay for half of it, maybe the city pays for half, great. I mean, we would do that independent of what Flatley does or does not do, if we can get DOT in Flatley. We think it should be both. We think it should be both. As does DOT, the State Department of Transportation. Now, who's got the microphone?
I do. Okay, so I had two questions. So one was a question, and one was, actually, two questions, sorry. So the first thing was, one of my takeaways from the meeting, I was at the meeting, was there was gonna be another follow-on meeting with the neighborhood. He was gonna go back and sharpen his pencil and come back with a revised set of slides. Okay, when is that gonna happen? Has that been scheduled?
He hasn't set a date for that yet. I can tell you, he contacted me and told me he wanted to do that. He wanted to do it this weekend, and I said, that's graduation. I just said, it's not a good name, weekend for the neighborhood.
Okay, but conversations are being had about a follow-on. Because that, to me, my takeaway from that was the next step was not him going to the planning board. He was gonna have another meeting with us, because he seemed to be receptive to some of our concerns. So I'd be interested to see...
I'd follow up, and I'd go to that follow-up, I'd go with the next meeting. Now, who's invited? Is it just the abutters, or any?
John, Mr. Flatley invites, he must invite abutters, and then other people who live on the neighboring roads. And, you know, those are the, those are the opinions he values, because they're the people directly impacted by this. But it is his private meeting, it's not my meeting. I get invited. And so, and his only legal obligation is really to only invite the people on Spindelwick who back up to his property. He's not in, he doesn't have to invite people on Cameron who don't back up, or, you know, any of that. And so, that's, he sends those notices out.
Okay, so...
That's why no one knows about it.
Yeah. So my other question was more of a technicality as well. So when you look at his plan, it seems like half of his neighborhood falls in an area where the zoning wouldn't support the type of houses that he's looking to build. So does he have to apply for a zoning variance to make something like this happen? And I'm talking about the R-40 portion of this.
If the proposal is different than what the current zoning is, then he either has to get a rezoning out of the Board of Aldermen, that's a legal action, which is pretty involved, or try to get a variance out of the ZBA. Those are the two ways. I mean, you have to build consistent with zoning unless you get a variance, which is basically a waiver by the ZBA, which needs to be well justified. Or, and it would be, I think, hard in this situation to show, you know, quote hardship for this, or get a rezoning out of the Board of Aldermen, which would probably need to be a much broader area than just this little section. So without something further, all he can do is basically propose something that's consistent with the current zone.
May I just interject for a second? He did mention at the meeting, eighty-nine, that he could have eighty-nine within his rights, but he was making it sixty to leave green space, because he's not the type of guy to clear cut. But this kind of defies the zoning. How could he fit all those in?
I don't know. I don't know, because I wasn't there, and...
We did, like, but he did, when he said rental and eighty, my head spun.
We did some back-of-the-napkin kind of calculations, and it doesn't look like that's what he can do, because there's also some environmental stuff with wetlands there that needs to be negotiated. And so it doesn't look like that's possible. The other part of that is, if he came in with a plan for eighty, I mean, we would be saying, wait, how can we accommodate a hundred and fifty cars?
We just heard from Laura Byers that the top of that hill is just a spring. It's just water.
Well, our whole neighborhood is. We all know that.
How can we build on all of that?
Yeah, well, he, what you, he's lower, though, that land's lower. And I did check with Pennachuck, because that was mentioned at that meeting. And he, they indicated, yes, they could provide water service there.
That's interesting, because they can't provide it to the streets that exist.
I know, I know, I know, I know. I questioned them on that. But I did follow up with them that, and, you know, in terms of the fire marshal, because there hasn't been a plan, the fire marshal really can't weigh in on anything. It's not until a plan goes to the planning office that a technical review is done, and then the fire marshal would be weighing in officially. So that's kind of nebulous.
Wait, wait for the microphone.
It's just a quick question. Certainly lots of different things I'm hearing, legitimate concerns. But the thing that puzzles me is the issue over him deciding to rent. Would that mean, well, it puzzles me. It doesn't concern me, it puzzles me. Because if a homeowner were to decide to rent their house, to move, rent their house, do they have to get some kind of special permission to rent their house?
No.
I don't think so. So I'm not sure why we're suggesting that someone who builds couldn't choose, if he didn't sell them all, to rent them. But why couldn't he do that?
We're saying he could do that.
Yeah.
We're saying he's within his legal rights to do that.
Yeah.
Once the house is built.
Well, right.
But people are expressing concern about that.
But my point is, would they be concerned if a homeowner wanted to sell, didn't sell, and rented their house? I don't think they would be.
That's one house. One house on top of fifty, not two fifty.
That concerns me, where we're starting to tell someone who owns a property what they can and can't do with that property. That's just concerning to me.
We're telling him we don't want him to rent it.
Now, could I, could I, could I just change the subject just for a minute, just to see? Do either of our, now, we've got a lot going on in the legislature. We've got rail, where we're making some strong advances as a result of all the action in the House and the Senate. And we've got some, the budgets would provide more school aid and other aid to all communities, including Nashua. Both, all these things I consider to be very positive. Do either of our state reps have anything to report? Or you want to say about what's going on in Concord?
I want to quickly talk about two things.
Because we need, we're not dismissing, I mean, we're definitely hearing what you're saying about this development, and we can come back to it. But it's possible someone's interested in this.
Couple of things. One is net metering, which is the renewable energy. And the city is doing a lot of good work in terms of mixing their energy sources. And, you know, when we were talking about this whole development, I was going to approach and talk to Mr. Flatley about how about making this a whole renewable energy. If he puts a five-megawatt, the current that the governor vetoed was five-megawatt net metering bill, and I would strongly encourage all of you, business owners, residents, to share your concerns that this will only move us in the right direction as New Hampshire. New Hampshire does not have a good renewable energy portfolio. So we, this is a, please call the governor's office and do that. And you're absolutely right in terms of adequate education funding. Nashua, the way the Senate amended the House budget, Nashua should be getting more towards, because it's based on free and reduced lunch kids in our schools. And so that's a positive thing. And mental health, and ER boarding, reducing that, SB, I don't want to put the numbers. So there are several bills and several things that are moving in the right direction. And please, please watch for those. And when you hear something, make sure you call your legislators, you call your senators, you call the governor's office, too, to say how it impacts us in Nashua, because we are the gate city, and we have to compete with Massachusetts. So this is a good example where, if we get that five-megawatt net metering, we could offer Mr. Flatley an opportunity to develop his property and make it more energy-neutral, net-zero, and also make some money when he's an investor. We want him in our community, so we can give him a good alternative. So some of those.
Laura, do you have anything to add?
I just wanted to give a quick...
Laura Tiller.
I just wanted to give a quick update on the rail issue. I know a lot of you were very interested last fall, when we were knocking on doors, asking if rail is ever gonna happen in Nashua. SB 241, which will begin the developmental plan for the Capitol Corridor project, which is extending commuter rail from Lowell up to the Manchester Airport in the city of Manchester. That bill passed both the Senate and the House. And this is simply gonna add it into the ten-year transportation plan that will allow the DOT to do the impact studies of what it's gonna take environmentally and financially to build a plan on how we're gonna pay for it. How much is it gonna cost for ridership? How is it gonna impact the environmental side of getting these trains going up there? So I'm pleased that it passed. We are hopeful that the governor will want to see it pass also. But this is the next step we have to take to see if we're ever really gonna get rail here. And I'm hoping that that's something that will be coming in the next few years.
So how many people here think rail would be a good thing? All right, that's pretty good.
I had a quick conversation with executive councilor Andrew Valinsky. And I said, someone asked me honestly, how long do you think it's gonna take, Laura? And I'm like, honestly, if we're lucky, eight to ten years. And he said, he sees it as a six-year project from now, if we can get this into the ten-year plan now, so. Thank you.
Now, if we do get this through the legislature and get it funded, and there's a lot to it, we would love to have two stations, one down here in the South End, somewhere along, around the Spitbrook Road area, and another up on Crown Street in downtown. So that's sort of what, that is what has been analyzed so far by the state, and would be more fully analyzed in what the DOT calls the final planning phase of the Capitol Corridor rail project. So that's what we're trying to bring about. All right, we could go back to the development or anything else. Now, we've got another ten minutes, maybe, maybe fifteen, before we need to leave, yes? Okay, that's okay.
Directly going to our police officers. It goes through Concord and then comes back, and we're wasting a lot of time when somebody's ill or hurt. Why is that?
The question is, when you call 911, the call goes to Concord and then is directed back to the dispatch in Nashua. And why doesn't it go direct? Well, the 911 system is state-created, and this is what we're, this is what we're given. And, I mean, I'm not sure that it, I'm not aware that it does delay things very long. I mean, we're getting, the fire department gets over eleven thousand emergency calls a year at this point, and the police department, I'm not sure of the number, but it's a lot. So we could ask about whether they think there's delay as a result of the rerouting.
Can I give one example?
Yes.
The other day, I witnessed something on Route Three, and I called 911. And I got the operator in Concord. She said she had no idea where I was, which means my cell phone didn't ping in up there, okay? And then she said, hold on, I have to connect you to the local authorities. Took five minutes before somebody came on the line.
Well, that's not good, you're right.
No, it's not.
Now, this is not the city decision. I mean, we are given the 911 system. Yes.
Isn't that just if you're using a cell phone and not a landline? Just the cell phone does that. That's been my experience.
If you do a landline and you dial 911, I think it still goes to the central...
I've done it both ways, and I haven't had the same experience.
All right, well, we, that's a good question. This hasn't come up before, so I've never really asked on the landline front.
Yeah, we did.
Any other thoughts or questions? I know people, some people have to leave and are already leaving, so...
It's because the Bruins game's starting.
Oh, the Bruins game is starting, okay. All right, well, thank you for coming.
That's why they're leaving.
Thanks for coming. Thanks for coming, we really appreciate your input very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.